Hello. I'd like to welcome everyone to our city council workshop this Wednesday, October the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Again, this is a virtual meeting. And once again, we ask that all the members and designated staff members request that they be recognized before speaking. And please have your mute, your mute function on and unmute yourself when you're seeking to be recognized. Welcome, and Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Madam Matheny?
Yeah.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Here.
Have all of you here. And we will have a discussion regarding annexation and utility.
Mayor may be recognized.
Yes, you may, Mr. Sturgeon.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and councilmembers, as we started working on this presentation with Steve McDonald, we realized this is a very complex subject and it's going to require more deliberation and additional workshops. And some of the things we probably need to talk about in the future is economic development opportunities, utility services and funding, efficiency of providing other public services, actual and perceived gaps in the quality of life, and awareness of future growth and knowledge of long-term community planning, and the ability to phase and manage growth in our community. And those are some of the additional workshops I believe we need to have. Now, we can combine some of those and don't have to have six different workshops, but I think those are additional subjects that we're going to need to talk about. So with that, I'll turn it over this evening to Steve McDonald, and he'll take us through this presentation and discussion tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. McDonald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We do have a presentation. It's hopefully fairly short, relatively short. I am going to have a member of staff actually manage rotating the slides. But if we can go to the next slide, I'll get started. So as an overview, I did want to again introduce myself. As Bill mentioned, my name is Stephen McDonald. I am the chief economist for GAI. I have had opportunity to be before you on a couple of other occasions, but just, I know you see a lot of faces, so just maybe to remind you a little bit about my expertise and experience. Prior to my thirty years of consulting, I did work for Orange County in their budget office, and later for Osceola County. And I think my claim to fame at Osceola County at the time, this was quite a long time ago, but I implemented the first transportation impact fee for the county and actually wrote the very first fire and rescue impact fee for the county. So I would tell you back in those times, I was probably not a very popular Osceola County employee. But I did enjoy that work and it had a lot of positive benefits, even though the development did provide some needed funding for the county as it was, you know, starting that growth. My involvement with Saint Cloud has been on and off over those thirty years. I did do some utility rate studies for Saint Cloud quite a while ago. I know things have changed, and I also did a park impact fee for Saint Cloud. I live in Kissimmee, so I know the area very well. In terms of the scope of this analysis, this, again, this topic that we'll talk about tonight is just really trying to consider the economic and fiscal impacts of an annexation strategy for the city. As Bill mentioned, what you're going to see tonight is just, you know, this material is only, is one piece of many considerations. I think there's just a lot of areas that you can spin off that you would want to consider in terms of our topics tonight. And hopefully, what's probably most important about my material and my presentation is it's really intended to provide facts, you know, to facilitate more questions and discussions. I don't think anything in here is intended to, you know, provide the absolute answer. I know as I go through the presentation, immediately you will probably generate some questions. Maybe if I can get through all of it, if you feel it's appropriate, there might be some material that does answer some of those questions that pop up. But again, it really is intended to facilitate questions and discussions. And as those questions and discussions, as Bill mentioned, leads into looking at other material later on. I did want to thank staff. A lot of staff members at Saint Cloud City, Saint Cloud helped with thinking about this presentation, so I'm very grateful to them. Veronica, Andre, Marjorie, Wendy, I know I'm probably going to forget a few, and I know you know their names, but it's always enjoyable when staff is very capable. It makes my job that much easier. I also do want to say, I will try as much as I can, I may provide some opinions, and I will try to say that's my opinion. My opinion, based on my expertise and my experience, may not necessarily be the exact opinion of your staff, and I'll try to keep you in mind of those. Can I have the next slide, please? Really, in terms of a summary, what I think you're going to, you know, hear from this material and see, new plan development right now, as we measure it, is contributing or fiscal benefit than existing households in the city. And we'll explain the reasons for that. There's some market conditions, there's also some tax law. It is really an artifact of what the legislation has approved in Save Our Homes. A household property value, and I, as I read this, I should have put quotes around property value, you know, we will discuss it, what that really means, but a property value of one hundred and seventy thousand is break even for the city, of which fifty-six percent of existing single-family units are below that threshold. You know, so, so my point about the property value, this isn't exactly as crazy as a question that says, well, what's the price of a car, right? But it's almost that, it's almost that complicated. If you just ask me what the price of a car is, you know, it's going to lead me to say, well, gosh, I don't know, it depends. You know, do you want four-cylinder, do you want eight-cylinder, do you want two doors, do you want four doors, do you want foreign, do you want domestic, do you want leather, do you want cloth? There isn't just a price for a car. That's the same for a house. I mean, is it, is it, is it a homesteaded house, is it a non-homesteaded house? Is it, you know, a state-sized, single-family, you know, large lot, or is it, you know, a attached modern town, you know, townhome? So, but right now, just keep that one hundred and seventy thousand in mind, and we can discuss exactly what those nuances are. But over the past twenty years, as it relates to the city, the annexations that have happened have contributed to growth with more fiscal benefit than would have existed. And I don't expect future annexation to not continue to create those fiscal benefits. I think the way the market, and you'll see the tax laws, annexation by itself can assist and aid in providing more of the fiscal benefit. But probably just as importantly, and this is one that's sometimes maybe difficult to just put a number to, future annexation also and the community's overall vision. And I think that's an important aspect that maybe you just don't boil down to dollars and cents. And of course, I believe, you know, I think there's some calculations and some facts and some numbers in this presentation, but it's always been my opinion that reducing your water service area is the opposite of what you'd want to do, I think, from a utilities perspective. Bigger is always better, but specifically reducing your water and service area is likely to result in negative impacts. And that's, some of that's fiscal, but that's also that ability to manage your growth. Can I have the next slide, please? So just to provide you some historical background about annexations in general and about growth in the city, if I could have the next slide. In Florida, there's rough, there's exactly four hundred and fifteen cities, towns and villages in the state. The average size of a city is thirteen square miles, which means that obviously, if you look at the bar chart to the right, there's a lot of small cities. Ninety percent of all cities in the state of Florida are less than twenty-five square miles. Basically, five thousand three hundred and seventy square miles of Florida is incorporated. Can I have the next slide, please? An annexation for cities, I mean, it is historically is a strategy, and I keep using the word strategy because that's what, you know, it's part of an overall growth strategy. It is something that cities have done over the last twenty years. Two hundred and forty-eight of those four hundred and fifteen, four hundred and twelve, or sixty percent of all municipalities in the last twenty years have expanded their city limits. And, you know, the ideal strategy is basically to accommodate urban development and needs for higher levels of service. Because when you, when you think about the layers of, you know, there's the federal government, the state government, the county government, the city government, as you're kind of, and I should actually flip that where the cities at the top, I mean, what you're trying to do with cities, incorporation of areas, is accommodate urban development and needs for higher levels of service. Cities are ultimately providing higher levels of service than counties, counties than states, et cetera. I will say, I haven't annexed, expanded their boundaries. Probably are areas that might have liked to, but there's just nothing more to annex. And I use South Florida as an example. I think in Broward County, there's, you know, there's some thirty cities in that one county. And again, it's the second most populous county in the state. But, but there's a strategy that delivering service to an urban population is through cities, not necessarily the county. Since that two thousand period, basically, those four hundred and fifteen municipalities have added one thousand two hundred and twenty square miles of area to their incorporated boundaries. That's about a thirty percent increase. We've also actually created thirteen new municipalities over that twenty years, and about forty, slightly less than ten percent, have actually doubled in size or more. Can I have the next slide, please? So in terms of city of Saint Cloud, what that means in growth, and I know you guys are probably all very familiar with these numbers, but just to kind of walk through some of the facts, you know, the city has grown. In from two thousand to two thousand and nineteen, you've doubled, more than doubled the size of your land area, incorporated area. That's, that's contributed to more households, more population. Population has increased one hundred and seventy-two percent. Not, it's not to say that there hasn't been infill in some areas, but it's, you know, fueled essentially with some new, with a lot of new development. Housing units have a hundred, have grown one hundred and thirty-seven percent. Employment up one hundred and thirty-one percent, and that's establishment employment. That's actually employment in the city limits. And of course, electric accounts and water accounts have seen very consistent growth. I left density last, because that's one measure I want us to focus on. It's a great metric for the city. Density, as we measure it, is just simply gross population per square mile. And so not only have you increased your land area and you've increased your population, you've actually done it, you had to, to have an increase in density, you've actually had to add on those new square miles of land area at a higher, at an existing or higher density than existed. And that's how you're getting this twenty-three percent growth in your density. So it really tells me that you're actually annexing in line with where growth is. If I could have the next slide, I'll show you an example of where that's not the case. And I know these cities specifically, because I've done some work with them, Bartow, Wildwood, and Felsmere have just gone out and grabbed a lot of land. And not to say that someone might not have development ideas for them, but, you know, Bartow, three hundred percent increase in the land area. Wildwood, seven hundred percent increase in the land area. Felsmere, a thousand percent increase in the land area. A lot of it was just land grab. And, and, and you can tell this, but then when you look at their density, Bartow's density almost down by eighty percent. Wildwood's density down by eighty percent. Felsmere's density is almost decreased by a hundred percent. You actually, and you can't without people just leaving. Whereas Saint Cloud, in this, at least in this core set, is the only city that is increased land area. And I would say it's significant, because it's one of the forty who have doubled, but they've also increased density. So that really shows you the effect of annexing with and for growth versus annexing without growth, just kind of a land grab. So if you want to call it bad annexing versus good annexing, you, in my opinion, you're on the good side, because that, that is, again, the ideal strategy is to accommodate urban development and growth. Can I have the next slide, please? So of course, with all that, that change and growth in population and households, it has also contributed to significant gains in property value. Property value has increased three hundred and seventy-five percent for the city between two thousand and twenty nineteen. So over the last twenty years, three hundred and seventy-five percent increase. That's a hundred and fourteen percent increase when you look at it at taxable value per acre, or nearly three hundred percent increase when you look at it taxable value per capita. Now, of course, land can grow in value from inflation, right? You just expect land prices to go up over time, as well as adding land, what you've done is add land. But even adjusting for inflation, the real value per acre in the city has increased nearly forty-five percent over the same period. So that is real wealth. I mean, it's property value wealth, so it's of property owners, their, on average, their wealth has increased on a real basis, not just because inflation. But that value growth has not been distributed equally, or I would say on an equivalent basis, to all properties. And we'll show you if I could have the next slide. You know, basically, what you can see what's happened is in terms of city, the single-family growth within the city of single-family homes, prior to two thousand, basically, annual new home growth, you know, if you want to call them, you know, permits or, you know, development, whatever you want to call it, averaged, peaked about three hundred units per year, but over that historical period, it averaged only seven, seventy units per year. Of course, you know, we had the Great Recession, which is kind of hidden in, you know, those two bars to the right of between two thousand and twenty nineteen. But we've overcome currently, for the city, you've overcome the effects of the Great Recession. You know, we are now back to delivering, adding house, the number of homes at the same rate we were prior to the Great Recession during the peak. But after two thousand and nine, basically, your average annual unit growth is nearly seven hundred, ten times more than, than your historical average. But two things are coming with that. If I could have the next slide. You know, there's basically a change in the market and tax laws I alluded to. But what's happening in terms of changes in the market, you can see that, and I use floor area ratio for this graph, I think you could, you could use acre, but I think it really hides kind of the real, the real concept. Floor area ratio, which is just measuring the size of the building relative to the size of the land, what you've seen particularly after two thousand, you know, two thousand and into the last twenty years, you've seen a dramatic increase in bigger homes being put on smaller lots. And some of that's market, I think people are, you know, as, as incomes grow, as wealth grows, people are demanding bigger homes. You know, it used to be that you, you, people would want a thousand square foot, twelve hundred square foot, single-family home. Not anymore in today's market. They really want, you know, the bigger home. But I think land prices have caused, you know, from a development community's perspective, have caused the need to create more, much more efficiency, getting more units to an acre, or basically lowering those, those lot sizes. So you're seeing that effect. And on the right side, again, you're seeing the effect of larger size of the homes. If I could have the next slide. But so what's happening then, if you couple that with our tax law, obviously, you know, the retail price of a home, very much driven by price per square foot. So what's happening from a market value perspective, the market value of homes today are reflecting the bigger, you know, the higher values of square footage than older homes. And, and on top of that, when you consider the tax law, the Save Our Homes, because you have nearly three-quarters of your housing units are homesteaded, you have a long, you know, I'll call it residency, you know, long core residency of your core residents, they've been here for a long time. Maybe there's some portability, you know, the fact that you can move your, your homestead in, but I think there's the fact that there's not a whole lot of mobility, you know, people either leaving Saint Cloud or coming in. The net effect of that is, you're, you're getting this, on a taxable value basis, going from market to taxable, you're getting this big spread between new homes versus older homes. Thirty-nine percent of all of your homes, single-family today, were built before two thousand, and they have an average taxable value of eighty thousand seven hundred. In contrast, thirty percent of your units have been built after two thousand and nine, so just over the last decade, and they have an average taxable value of one hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred, more than two times. And in fact, if you look at the table, what you're just seeing is, you know, I expect next year, the gap's going to get, you know, even greater. Because if, if existing residents don't break that homestead seal, right? If they don't take it with them, or if they don't, you know, leave, or if they don't sell, all those homes that were built earlier on, you know, they are smaller on a unit size. You always have a price differential in the market, but they're gaining that, that suppression of their assessed value. And with homestead, you're, you're just going to see this gap get even bigger as, as we go forward. If I could have the next slide. And you can really see it in terms of kind of, you know, the downtown area versus the newly annexed, in some cases newly annexed, but, you know, the outlying areas in which, you know, development by virtue of having the land availability are providing the newer homes at higher value. So this represents just single-family units of assessed values in two thousand and nineteen. So you see all along the lake, not that you can't see some, you know, red is the lowest value, and the dark green's the highest value, so something yellow is right at that break even. Not that you can't see some green or yellow in the grid, but you can see how it's dominated by, again, just longtime residents taking advantage of the Save Our Homes as it was authorized by the Florida Legislature. Can I have the next slide, please? And I think this, this actually provides me with a great opportunity. I don't get to do this very often. I think, I think it's certainly a great opportunity to look back at what I, what I said two years ago versus what's happening today. If you recall, you know, when, when I did the Tohoku fiscal impact analysis, the differential was a main contributor to that positive fiscal impact. It was largely driven by these market and tax law conditions. So when you look at what we did in two thousand and eighteen versus what's actually happening, in our two thousand and eighteen report, we had a market price. We said the average market price was going to be two hundred and eighty-three thousand. We've, we've seen fifty-four qualified sales, the actual price is two hundred and eighty thousand. So we were very close on in terms of what we thought the market would transact at. In our two thousand and eighteen study, we, we set the property appraiser ratio of market prices to be market value on the tax rule is going to be about eighty-two point five percent. So the market values in our study were estimated at two hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred, and out of the seventy-four units that have been built, that have actually been added to the tax rule, that averages two hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred. So again, we were, we were spot on, where we thought the market was going, how it's going to translate into taxable value. The only place we were wrong is in our study, we assumed seventy-one percent would be homesteaded, so the average taxable value would be one hundred and eighty-eight of that development. Actual taxable value on average is two hundred and ten thousand, because only thirty-nine percent are homesteaded. But, but I think most importantly, if you think about it, the seventy-four units that were added to the tax rule in two thousand and nineteen have added more than fifteen point six million in taxable value. That's equivalent to two, nearly two hundred units, comparing it to homes built before two thousand, that have that average of eight, eighty thousand seven hundred. So you're getting roughly the revenue generation, just for added lawn taxes, not, not all, but the revenue generation of nearly two hundred units, but only the service burden of seventy-four units. And so that was a really big driver of what our Tohoku analysis said. Can I have the next slide? Please? And so I think to just get into a little bit more detail, this is probably actually more detail in this presentation than we did for the Tohoku, just, but again, putting it against, you know, following up with this, this update is what is happening on an existing per capita, per FTE basis versus, again, Tohoku is that example of new, using your two thousand and nineteen CAFR, so these are updated numbers, in two thousand and eighteen, we were probably using your two thousand and seventeen CAFR, your current city per capita, per FTE resident population revenues totaled nine hundred and twenty-two. And so form taxes, charges for services, gas taxes, shared revenues, public service tax, interest earnings, unbalances, miscellaneous, and of course, your OUC electric charge, and then a water and sewer payment and lube transfer in. And again, in our methodology, the reason we're heavily relying on kind of the per capita is, is all of these revenue sources, with the exception of added law, but all of these revenue sources are generally consumption-based or people-based. So your charges for services is people use on those services. And unfortunately, not just use services, some charges for services are your, your fines and stuff from, from the public safety perspective. So people getting speeding tickets. So it's all, you know, consumption-based, people spending on gas. Actually, your shared revenues is a pure per capita formula. So again, that's why we rely on the per capita method, because they are consumption-based. So when you compare then the new home, if I use that two hundred and eighteen, eight thirty-eight, which is the actual taxable value of the, of those set of Tohoku homes, per capita revenues total nine hundred and ninety-six. And again, the biggest difference you can see is, is your added law. I mean, they're just delivering more added law per person than your existing average case. That nine hundred and ninety-six would have been a heck of a lot bigger, but again, we did not include it in our original analysis, because Tohoku is not in a U.C. service area. So you're not getting any gain in that electric charge. But we do believe it's a conservative approach, because since we don't consider the, the higher potential, higher levels of consumption. I mean, I think higher home prices means the need for higher household incomes in order to pay, you know, mortgages and that kind of stuff, which should translate into higher consumption base, but we don't incorporate that. We just, we say it's going to, on a per-person basis, be equivalent to the existing conditions. So if I can have the next slide. Now, in terms of cost, again, using your two thousand and nineteen CAFR, your current per cap, city per capita, per FTE, total cost is not considering general government, it's considering public safety, transportation, economic environment, culture and recreation, and it's considering what your capital obligations are. It's important to note, it's not, that capital obligation, using your statement of activities in your CAFR, it's your interest payments plus what you're depreciating in assets. That's a better way to do it than, it doesn't consider the capital expense, because the depreciation aligns all of your capital assets with its life, average service life. So for example, you could have built a new city hall twenty years ago, but because it has a fifty-year depreciation asset life, it's, it's actually in that capital number. That better reflects what is the capital burden on an existing basis. So you can see it's nine hundred and twenty-nine for the same new home, and again, as, you know, we discussed earlier, that new home that's driving the higher levels of revenue, same, we're assuming same general government, public safety, transportation, economic environment, culture and recreation, because it's really an operating per-person service basis. No reason to expect that one household to have any higher needs in park and rec than you're actually delivering to current residents. Or for that matter, any higher needs in a public safety than you're delivering to your current residents. The only difference is the capital side. And I believe it remains a conservative approach, because the way we do capital for new homes is we go and assume, take all of your assets, and we assume that we rebuild everything that you've ever built, it's on your asset list. We escalate it to today's dollars, then we debt fund it and say, you know, Um, we escalate it to today's dollars, then we debt fund it and say, you know, all every one of these new population or individuals or per per FTE capita are going to require the same amount of assets that you've you already delivered on an existing basis. And that adds up to two hundred and forty six dollars. That's the only difference. Um, I, what's happening in this analysis, though, there are some benefits. Uh, debt rates on a municipal service bond um are pretty low. Uh, so that number is a little bit lower than than our analysis. But again, so the nine hundred and forty two compared to the nine twenty nine. Um, net net difference then, my nine hundred and ninety six in revenue uh is is more than paying for its nine hundred and forty two in cost. And can I have the next slide, please? But what's probably more important is to think about, you know, what would the the impact be from from an outwater, outside water service charge? Again, we didn't ca- we didn't include it in the analysis, because that outwi- out outside water service charge was never revenue. I mean, it was only, if you hadn't of annexed Tohoku, then you could have collected it, but it wasn't going to be lost revenue. Um, the idea of lost outside city opportunity costs, it's not real dollars. However, let's consider it. Um, so when I look at that uh total build out, um, for uh on a per capita basis, uh for an average two point seven five person home, you know, uh, the revenues, total revenues based on the nine ninety six is gonna be two thousand five hundred and seventy nine. Uh, my total cost, two thousand and fifteen, so I'm driving sixty four dollars of annual net fiscal benefit. Doesn't sound like a lot for a home, but when you multiply that for the build out, um, that's two hundred and six thousand dollars of, again, annual fiscal surplus, um, which if you if you, you know, if you wanna talk about the opportunity cost of that, if you bond it, you know, that could pay for twelve million dollars of something. Um, but the point being, i- if if I if I consider that opportunity cost and and lost surcharge, you know, based on an average water usage of four thousand gallons, which is the average of homes in Saint Cloud, um, the water uh service, water and sewer service, the water and sewer bill would be on average fifty three dollars a month. So the the nine point five percent portion that comes back to the general fund in your payment of lieu transfer, uh payment in lieu of taxes, would only equate to um a fifteen dollar lost opportunity. So again, if you multiply that by build out, annexing created a positive surplus of more than two hundred thousand. Um, but what you for, what was foregone was only, you know, less than fifty thousand. So so it's important to think about the whole, not necessarily just one isolated um potential revenue source that might be an opportunity loss. Uh, if I can have the next slide. What what's probably mo- more important is thinking about the value of your enterprise businesses. Um, you know, from an economic perspective, lar- as I mentioned, larger is better. And and I think that's true about most utilities. I mean, electrical is clearly a a a natural monopoly. Um, you're gonna deliver much better uh costs o- o- on on an average cost basis, you're gonna be able to deliver much cheaper electricity when it's when it's a large utility. Um, fact of the matter is, there there should only be one electric utility in the state of Florida. I mean, that that would be the best way to get the lowest electric cost. Won't happen, because, you know, we 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 don't want, we don't want one monopoly. But the same is true of water and sewer. And and I know it can be different depending on, you know, where where you're at, potentially what your source of water is, and, you know, physical constraints and, you know, this and that. But but ideally, even water and sewer is delivered uh more efficiently on a cost basis uh when it is bigger. Um, but if if you think about, you know, reducing those services, when you when you when you think about its effect to your general fund, um, across the board, uh, you know, I I looked at Ocala, Saint Cloud, Apocca, and all three of those have electric utility enterprise funds. Pensacola doesn't, it's just water and sewer. But if you look at, if if those enterprise transfers, the payment in lieu of taxes that goes into the general fund, if they went away, every one of those cities, the average value of homes in order to break even would have to increase sixty nine percent, fifty seven percent, thirty two percent and and forty eight percent. You'd have to have significant um increases in home values just to for the those homes to then pay for themselves. And home values wouldn't change like that, which ultimately means you would have to have higher tax rates if you got rid of your enterprise uh businesses. So enterprise businesses add tremendous value uh to operate the city as a whole and and alleviate the pressure on on taxes, basically. Um, I think if you ta- if you took your enterprise sons as they're contributing in payment in lieu of taxes into the city, um, you would have to increase your millage rate by four point five percent just to recover um the current um benefits of your enterprise funds. Can I have the next slide, please? So, in closing, um, uh, I I think, to me, what what some of this data suggests um is is again, planned new development is contributing more fiscal benefit than existing households. Um, uh, annexation of the past twenty years has contributed to growth with more fiscal benefit than one he- that would have existed. Um, if you didn't have the annexation, I don't believe you would have increased your real property value clearly as much as you have. Um, I don't expect any reason that that future contribute that benefit. Now, I wanna be clear, that doesn't mean every single property that you annex in is always gonna be fiscally positive. Um, annexation, as I mentioned, it's a strategy. There will be, there are pockets of existing homes that you may wanna annex just to fill the, you know, the little holes, um, the infill annexation or some some outlying area, or maybe for connectivity purposes. Uh, if they do have low values, they aren't going to be fiscally positive. But just in general, I wouldn't expect future annexation to not contribute um more fiscal uh benefit. But not just based on dollars and cents. Uh, I I do believe that future annexation also maintains your ability to manage that planned development and your overall community vision. Um, the growth is going to happen. It's it, you know, central Florida, by and large, growth will happen, urban development is happening. Um, uh, people are moving in. Um, I think, and even, you know, post COVID, they're still gonna continue to move to this area. Uh, this is an area that is generating great job growth. So growth is gonna happen. Annexation's gonna give, I believe, the city the ability to manage and plan that versus not. Um, and and I and I think uh by and large, reducing your water service area is highly likely to result in negative impacts, both fiscally and and again, that ability to manage that growth. Uh, I know, I appreciate your your time. Um, I know that was a lot of material, uh presented very fast. Um, but I I turn it back to Bill uh and and more than willing to to answer any questions or make any clarifications you might have on some of the, some of this information.
Bill, do you?
Oh, I was, Mayor, that's you. Um, if council has questions, I'm sure we do, for Steve.
I have a question. Part growth for us will also be determined by our water capacity. At what percentage level uh do you say you should not go beyond? I I wouldn't imagine you commit a hundred percent of your water capacity uh to growth. Do you have any uh input on that? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, yeah, I I understand, and and that's um, um, that's an interesting question. Uh, you know, I I I wouldn't say that I have a specific answer for you right now. Um, I know we do, we have, we have Henry Thomas is also a panelist, um, who might have some thoughts. Um, but but I always see and understand water capacity as something that can be fluid. Um, I think I think it's a, I think it's a question that we can certainly address in in future workshops. I mean, I think um there is definitely a workshop that's that's really focused on um uh utilities more in more detail than I provided. I've kind of just scratched the surface. But but what I, my opinion over the last thirty years is I haven't, I haven't ever seen a utility not gain more capacity when they need it. I mean, water and sewer i- is basically a a health and welfare um type of commodity. Now, how they get that additional capacity, I mean, it can depend, but I don't see it as a static constraint. And and I know there's a lot of pressure on alternative water supplies, but everybody in the state is going to have to address alternative water supply. Um, Henry and I were talking the other day about basically water as a commodity and 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 the pressures that we're gonna see thirty years from now. So we've been thinking about it for thirty years, and I just don't, I I would not consider uh any one capacity today to be a static number. I think it is dynamic and there is potential to um uh gain and grow that capacity as it's needed. Uh, but I under, you know, I think the question is very good in terms of uh we 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 should probably look at it a little bit more detail and and potentially get you an exact answer in in future workshops.
Councilor Matheny, you have a question?
Yeah, I think that question is probably more appropriate for Ms. Craig. Um, I know all the conversations that I'm in dealing with water, um, the Central Florida Water Initiative, water restrictions, I I don't feel like it's such a rosy um outlook as Mr. McDonald just had. Um, but um Ms. Craig probably would have a really, really good handle on that. But the questions that I had, kind of listening to the presentation, and it was a lot of information, thank you very much. And I have to like chew on it a little bit. Um, like when you're talking about, you made a comment at the end, reducing the water service area will likely result in negative impacts. You know, my question just was like, what what all did you take into consideration when you're looking at our water and sewer system and the cost to the city? Like, you know, we've got, we're staring down the barrel of between eighty to a hundred million dollars to expand capacity for Cypress Lakes, which isn't even gonna meet our demand, an ultimate build out based on the limits of the city and the projections and things like that. So, uh, you know, my my big concern all along has been, are we gonna bankrupt the city trying to like reach out and grab all this water? Is it, does it make more sense to like pull things back? Like, so are you taking into consideration current debt as well as cost to expand the water and sewer system when you're making this analysis?
No, um, I I I think our comment, my comment, and and i- i- about the the service area, reducing the service area, um, was more oriented towards right now, holding all things constant. And and hopefully, I didn't, I didn't wanna, hopefully, my answer wasn't meant to sa- my a- answer wasn't meant to sound rosy. I mean, I'm, no, I'm not saying that the picture's rosy, but but you also have to look back. I mean, average household consumption twenty years ago was also eight, nine, ten thousand. So for us to go back then and and really instill the need for conservation and everything, I guess my point is, is don't just look at today's condition and assume that that, you can't change it for the future. Not, you know, my my answer wasn't intended to be rosy. But your question specifically on alternative water supply, the answer is no. We did not go and do, you know, essentially a long term financial model um about, you know, what that cost or what that impact would be. The comments about your service areas, I wouldn't reduce your service area, um, because in general, larger, providing water and sewer and electricity, I'm including all utilities as a general comment, to a larger customer base is more efficient than a smaller customer base, holding all things constant. Because whether you provide the water or whether somebody else provides the water, alternative water supply costs are going to get passed through to consumers. You're not gonna get rid of alternative water supply impacts to consumers by just reducing your utility service area. Reducing your size of your customers is not an efficient, in my, in my opinion, is not an efficient utility. It should grow um in order to provide the best cost. So it's just more of a general comment than it is a specific financial comment.
Yeah, 'cause see, that that concerns me, because um, you know, potable water um is scarce. You know, the Central Florida Water Initiative is is barrel barreling down on us. Um, you know, we've got this big major project looking us in the face, and this is like dollars that the city has to come up with. You, to your point, water costs are gonna be paid by the the end user. But the question is, do we take the debt on for those costs? Or do we let another municipality take that debt on and take that project on and take on that responsibility? To me, that's like the big question, but this is, it sounds like this analysis isn't really taking that into consideration.
Well, no, and 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 yes, and and I don't think, hopefully, a- again, I I reiterate, we weren't, hopefully, we weren't, didn't come across it, I was supposed to answer questions like that in that sense, that that's not what this analysis was. I mean, I think there is specifically a workshop related just to utilities and really kind of the needs and and basically the questions that you'd ha- you would have. Um, but again, I was, I, if if you ask me again, um, I, because of some perceived loss of um outside surcharge, because the gain you have in terms of the fiscal impact to the city, plus your ability to manage and control and plan for growth, it is, I didn't equate that to a dollar cents. Um, but if you do reduce your service area, you are losing that ability to see and and help plan and manage, you know, your growth and 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 future vision. So, um, hopefully, hopefully, that, you know, provides some insight.
Yeah, I just think that's important to point out that, you know, that this perspective wasn't really part of your task. So, um, because, you know, a couple places in the presentation, it talked about reducing the service area, but it doesn't sound like we've really analyzed that component. You're just making a general statement that u- utilities are more efficient the larger they get.
Yeah, absolutely.
That statement.
Yeah, a- and I think if you look at, I mean, regional water, everybody is looking at regional water as the answer. I mean, Tampa Bay, you know, bigger water systems may may be some part of the answer to, you know, all these challenges and dilemmas we have. Um, so I feel comfortable, I can still say that shrinking your water service area would not, is not going to be positive from a from a fiscal perspective. It doesn't consider, uh, as you point out, it doesn't consider all those, you know, looming challenges uh in the future, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Trace, Councilor Trace.
Thank you. Um, so I kind of took a different approach at looking at some of this, um, from, just some of the numbers from the um, uh, SIFAR and just some of your um, spreadsheets as well. Um, I I like some of the the uh analysis you put into uh the impact of the market and tax law, just looking at the the age of structure. Um, kind of a question there, or kind of a statement, starting with a question. Um, just looking at that and doing an a a breakdown of of uh the the values, the market value as it equates over time, it looks like it goes down about fifteen percent per decade, the market value of some of these homes. I- is that true throughout, you know, all of central Florida? Is that what we expect for something built today? Is it going to decrease in that market value fifteen percent every decade? Or is that just because it's an older home, smaller?
Uh, no, that's a, that's a great question. I I think it, I think it's it's a dynamic of the the individual market. Um, and again, I don't want, uh, you know, just because it's an old home doesn't mean it it can't command um a large value in 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 retail value. Um, and from a price perspective, as a matter of fact, I think, you know, as more and more cities kind of, you know, we 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 went from that, you know, people lived in cities to that pendulum, then people moved out into the suburbs. And now that pendulum's back, people are moving back into the cities. Um, I I think you can see cities in which older homes can command a higher price than new homes from a retail side. But but the challenge with, I think, your particular situation is is the fact that you have, you know, three quarters homesteaded, longtime residents. What the property appraiser is supposed to do, they are supposed to reflect, the market value is supposed to reflect the real, real purchase price of the home, right? That's before you you, you know, do any of the homes assessed adjustments and then, you know, the taxable value adjustment. Um, when homes are homesteaded, there's just no comparables. And so I think what happens is, is that that what you're potentially seeing is just, you know, if you took a home, and there's probably a couple of your staff, I know Marjorie just just purchased a home in that grid. I'm sure she wasn't, she wasn't seeing home prices that that are suggestive on this table. I mean, as you probably, you know, paid a relative premium. Um, but it it's not caught up in terms of how the property appraiser is putting those on the record. Um, so I I don't think, I I think to answer dynamics, if you have a very robust um mass appraisal um, mass appraisal system and where you're getting a lot of sales every year and you have a lot of comps, that in fact, you should not see, um, depreciation over time, just for depreciation over time of the prices of homes. I mean, they should maintain their equity value, um, because home, home, a single family properties are still a store of value. They are still in a, a good investment. Um, um, so I would not expect to see that. I think that's just an artifact of there's not enough comps. And so the property praiser is not really reflecting true, true market value homes.
Okay, cause that, that to me had a, a, a big worry of, I know everything built, you know, older than seventies, eighties is, is going to have a, a, a lower market value, especially if it's been homesteaded for 20 or 30 years. But I mean, there is, there's a steady decrease from the 2019 number to the 2000 number to the 1990 number, um, of 14, 16, 13% per decade. And that just, that has me scared of, are we, are we never going to chase, are never going to catch the, the end of the rope that's slipping through our fingers? Because it's, it keeps on decreasing. So we have to play that population Ponzi scheme of keep on adding people to help pay for what's in the past and, and vice versa.
No, I, 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 I really think it's, I mean, you may be burdened, again, honestly. Um, I think it's an excellent question. We can look into more, you know, I don't have a specific answer. But I think, you know, as long as you, you have, you have households and, and residents who want to be long time residents of St. Cloud. I mean, I think that's the artifact then of tax laws is, you know, is, is going to suppress that. Whereas other places, you know, City of Orlando, I mean, people are selling homes down in downtown and I think it's reflecting market. So I don't think the long-term outlook would be you're going to continue to see depressed market values, but it's, it's a function of whether or not homes sell. But it's an excellent question.
Okay, um, kind of next question. And, and to me, the, the, the crux of this whole thing is cost of services and cost of providing services per the, um, taxable value or however we, we pay for those services, right? Um, so in your numbers from the C F R, um, the cost to provide just public safety is $463 per, um, per individual in the city. It, with the old, um, market value, because you had your old market value and new market value, um, the ad valorem of the old is $195 per capita and the new is 404 per capita. So just, just providing public safety, police and fire, coming out of the entire ad valorem budget, we don't even cover those, those cost of services.
Um, yes and no. Uh, so again, if you, i- if, if you're familiar with the CAFR and you, and you look specifically, so this, the $463 here is represented as, as your gross operating cost per person, right? Um, but what, what happens from a budgeting perspective, you think about your costs upfront and then you, you take away what you can, uh, public safety specifically does, does have a, a relatively, um, I don't want, want to call it significant, but there are charges for services that partially go to fund, you know, that 463 per person. Okay, so when you look on the revenue table, part of that $149, you know, basically gets netted out of public service costs before you have to fund it with your general revenues, which are ad valorem and, and shared revenues and everything. But, but again, I think the way you asked your question, if you said you only wanted to fund police and public, or fire and public, police and public fire, public safety, you only wanted to fund that with ad valorem, I think your comment is correct. Ad valorem alone, even if you net out some charges and services, wouldn't cover that 463. But you're, it is, it is not taking into consideration, you know, gas taxes. Well, not, not gas taxes, all those non, um, dedicated funds, you know, the shared revenues and public service taxes and earnings. You know, it's, it's like a big pool. You're actually using those to then help offset those costs. So it, it isn't that fire, police and fire are just funded with ad valorem. There are other non, uh, dedicated revenues that, that help, help on that. But your observation is correct.
Um, yeah, because to me it seems like to provide some of those, the, the public safety of the street paid for by the, um, enterprise funds and the electric transfer, some of those utility type funds that bring in $207 per capita to help fund the, the public safety element, which is, which is fine, but it's one of those of do we annex or not? Kind of comes down to me of, well, we can get the, the charge for services and the transfer out of the utility and, um, the electric service without annexing the property. So the net positive benefit to the city is, is greater than just the delta of the 25% um, surcharge on the water.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, um, yes, I, I see where you're coming from. And, and I, I think that, again, that observation, uh, we would have to, I would have to think about it a little bit more in that sense. I don't, I don't dispute the math. Um, I, I guess the real issue then is, well then, but then that property is not going to receive its urban services. And more than likely, you know, even though you don't annex in, you know, depending on your mutual aid agreements with the county, you may actually be providing them fire and, and public safety without ever getting any ad valorem, you know? Um, so it's, yeah, I, I, I think, I think, um, uh, uh, I, I think it's an interesting question. It probably, I think for future workshops, maybe we should think about the math, you know, trying to look at the math in a couple of different ways. Um, um, so that's, that, that's actually a very good, very good idea.
Um, and then, uh, kind of next point, um, is to just figure out, like, actually our utility service area, which is pretty much the, the outer perimeter of, of the area we're talking about, the current service, uh, city boundary, um, is what it is. But then there's, there's big pockets that, you know, uh, before I was on council, Tohoku was annexed and we're going to have to provide a, a, a fire station in that area just to balance out service boundaries. Um, uh, Center Lake was annexed, so we're, we're likely going to have to put in a, a fire station over on the east side of town to help balance out that service area. Do we jump the turnpike and we do go, do we go down Kissimmee Park Road? And if we annex that area, then we have to add another fire station, same with Hickory Tree Road as we're going further south and further east down Hickory Tree Road. So that's some of the actual, uh, pen to paper, you know, figuring out the dollars in the sense of this of, we'd have to build a station for three or five million dollars. We have to staff it, you know, continually. Do the, do, do the taxes generated from that, um, help offset the, the cost of that? So that's kind of the, the next level analysis I kind of want to look into of, once we're talking about some of these big swaths, how do, how do we make sure that we're not just using all the utility fund to help fund city services and making sure that those, that the, the way that community is, is designed or built or whatever helps pay for it?
Right. And that's, that's, that's an excellent point and I, and I think you're right. I think there are additional analyses, you know, for maybe next future workshops. I will, um, maybe at the risk of, um, saying something very unpopular. I, I think along with that and along with those ideas, um, you, again, I think the community had an opportunity to consider, um, fire assessments or fire fees, whatever you want to call them. I know it was probably a relatively con- controversial issue. Um, but across the state, um, it, it's, it's a legally authorized uh, funding source, um, that many cities and a lot of counties take advantage of. And so I think along your, kind of your thought process, I think you then need to consider, are you missing opportunities and leaving, um, valuable revenue on the table that, that would potentially give you a different answer? Um, versus just saying, I've got to fund everything through ad valorem and, and my utilities.
Um, and I'm not the, the, I'm not a fan of that situation. To me, it's, it's somewhat too, and I don't know if there's other places in the state that work this out of, you know, do we work something out with the county of, you know, we're now annexing something, having to provide that service, they're getting the same amount of revenue without, I agree, I think they have a fire fee, so they get a little bit less revenue, but they're not having to cover the, the entire cost of that, so.
Oh, yeah.
Um, that's, you know, different, different conversation.
Yep, absolutely.
Even this is Henry Thomas. If I could add to the discussion a little bit, uh, with respect to, uh, your, your examples, Commissioner, or Councilman Trace on the, on the fire, keep in mind, you also have another revenue source that as you annex these areas and they are, it's based upon potential new growth, is you have impact fees that can pay for these capital needs. And i- if we have a funding strategy where we ensure that growth can pay its own way, then theoretically, the, the capital costs related to those fire stations should be picked up by the new growth in the areas that they serve. And similarly, when we're talking about, uh, new water supply in the future, uh, i- i- in, in clearly a major cost, as you point out, is the debt service on that new capacity. But again, we can also charge that new growth an impact fee. And that is, you can pledge that to pay that debt. So you've got some funding sources that can be matched to the cost, if you will, at the margin to help pay especially the capital needs portion of, of some of these, uh, issues, related to some of these issues.
And thank you, Mr. Thomas. We are looking at reassessing our impact fees because I don't think any of them cover the cost to provide that new, new service. Um, and specifically in this, you know, hopefully we have another, um, workshop about the, the water side of things. And we can get all the, all the facts on the table for that, per, um, gallon that it's going to cost for, um, the, the new, the new water coming out of, um, the Canoe Creek Plant or whatever, uh, whatever it's called. It is the equivalent to our entire water impact fee.
Well, I, I understand that.
It, it.
Yeah, the cost of new growth would go up, uh, which to some degree that may diminish it. Uh, with respect to the fire issues, you know, some communities actually have impact fee zones. And you could actually recover new fire stations specific from the, from the develop in that area, uh, so that it doesn't burden infill growth, for example, with higher impact fees. So there's a lot of strategies I, I'm just suggesting that can mitigate some of these impacts. And I do understand, you know, the cost of alternative water and how it's going to impact you. But we have some options and, you know, quite frankly, to the extent that new growth drives these costs upward in Florida, whether it's water supply or public safety facilities, i- you know, I think it's the best practice that you try to make, repay it.
Definitely.
Mr. Trace.
Um, and then just one overall question with, with, um, regards to level of service and, and changing demographics. I, I guess it's more of a, a statement is, I don't know with the new generation and post-COVID, you know, does the level of service change for a lot of, um, uh, transportation modeling? For office space allocation, for people don't go to the grocery store anymore and get it delivered to them? Just a lot of that stuff that with changing demographics is going to really change the way we look at a lot of these financial models and a lot of the, the growth, uh, output out of, um, development.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I, I think, I think, you know, there's a lot that only time is, is really going to help us understand. Um, you know, a lot of thoughts, a lot of opinions, but, but yeah, I think we are going to see some changes, dramatic changes.
Thank you. Let's, let's go.
Councilman Cooper.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. McDonald, you had spoke about water, you know, and we ought to go ahead and keep growth and stuff like that. Tell me about the, the roads. Most of the, most of the roads in the city of St. Cloud are the big, big major arteries and stuff like that. Osceola County owns those. How are you going to get them larger from two lane roads that are absolutely stifled right now? You're smiling, I'm smiling too, but how are you going to keep going? Growth southeast, west on these two lane roads? Like the Hope, well, it's got a two lane road in the next 10 years before they'll get four lane. Maybe five, but 10. Um, explain to how we're going to do that. I mean, the county doesn't have any, they always say they don't have any money. They're five, 10 years before they even look over in this side of the county. Uh, they, they always look to the west and we don't, we don't get the money, so.
Yeah.
How do you eat that up?
Yeah, that, 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 that's an interesting question. I mean, it's, it's, it's.
No, that's most of the question of.
Yeah.
You're talking about going larger and keep going. And you're talking about, well, we can go get the water, we can find the water, whatever. Let's find the roads first because I care, I guarantee you, everybody at five o'clock right now, get out there on 13th Street or you get on any two lane road, it's a major road. Go south on these two lane roads we got. They're upset. They don't want to keep going and growing and growing and put three times you've got more than what you've got now on a two lane road. This is getting bad.
Well, I, I think though, uh, uh, let me answer it this way. Um, I, I don't know the answer to that specific question on how you get the county to do, to do things. But what I will say is, I, I think you do need to pat yourselves on the back a little bit more than you do. I know you hear from angry residents and, and frankly, sometimes level of service is not a number. I mean, it's a perception, uh, which is important, but sometimes that perception, the, the, how you translate it into who's responsible can get missed. You know, if you look at, at paved miles of road in the city of St. Cloud in 2000, you had 3.98 miles of road per resident. In, in 2020, you have 3.98 miles of road per resident. So what you've done is you, you, the city of what you can control, you have added on at the same level of, if you want to call it a level of service, uh, that's a metric, but you have added on roads to accommodate population at the same rate. So how it's paid for, I'm not, you know, again, I can't answer that question, but it's been paid for and you've added on the same number of miles of road per person today, uh, on all of the new growth that happened since 2000. On the other hand, the county had basically, uh, about the same two, 3.9 miles of road per person, per capita in 2000. And in, in 2020, it's down to 2.5. So, so again, the county has allowed, again, and it's not about the county, you know, the counties and cities, you know, you have, have control over your limits, city limits. But if there's land that's, that's entitled and available for growth, you know, it's really not a county or a city. So when I say allowed growth, growth has happened in the county. But what the county hasn't done is it hasn't kept up with roads at the same rate. And this, and therefore, in my opinion, it, it can't be the same level of service. Um, you know, so, so can you show them those numbers? And say you're not doing your job and it's not just, you know, again, that answer is not just about just St. Cloud. I mean, so they, they are presumably not providing a roadway network all across the county. Um, uh, I mean, I mean, I guess you can, you, you can discuss it. You can say you're not doing what you should be doing. I, I, I couldn't, certainly couldn't answer how you get them to do it. Um, but I will say again, in terms of the, the perception, and this, this is purely my opinion. Um, and I've been on 13th Street, um, uh, uh, at five, I, you know, I, I, I leave, as I mentioned, I live in Kissimmee. I watch the traffic trying to go down to Point Xiana on John Young at five. Um, but roadways, and I'm not going to de-minimize this, but roadways are, are a different kind of, um, asset. Uh, you build water and sewer, particularly sewer, you build sewer to meet your peaks. Because when people flush the toilet in the morning, when everybody's flushing it in the morning when they get up or flushing it at night after dinner, you don't want to have, not have enough sewer capacity. So you build your system to the peaks. Roads, it's not reasonable to build roads to peak traffic. And again, I'm not going to de-minimize the, the problems that exist out there. Um, but, but AM, AM rush hour and PM rush hour, that's kind of, again, an artifact of people are on the roads. Um, but if, if four hours out of 24, that's the only problem. You know, the frustration that someone might feel in, in those two time periods on rush hour, doesn't translate that you're not delivering an acceptable level of service the, the rest of the 20 hours. And you, I just don't think you want to build, you don't want to build Vine Street 20 lanes just as, so no one's inconvenienced at rush hour.
I think, I think we're almost at hand in hand, the roadways versus the water and growth and keep going. You've got, you've got a, get a medium, a mid, a middle, middle road that you've got to try and go both of. I mean, we, we got to look on both sides. I mean, you just can't look on, oh, as long as we get water and we can get sewer, let's keep growing. That, maybe that's not the smart things to do until you get some of the roadway infrastructure. I'm an infrastructure person. Yeah. I just don't see that. Maybe that's a different, different ballgame that you're not looking at or a little different from where I am. And I, I have, I have another question about the $170,000 for the property taxes, right?
Mm-hmm.
You've got your homestead and exemption and stuff like that. In the majority of what I saw was, uh, In the majority of what I saw was uh probably in the 170 or less, and then they get the homestead on top of that. So it's not even, probably, like you said, 60 or 70%, it's not even paying its own fair share of what it should be, and it's been there. So, you know, you can't stop that. I mean, that's the foregone, foregone conclusion, it's done, you know, so.
Right.
You know, until you get that 275, 285,000 dollars, at least, you're not, they're not paying the, paying the tax bill, so. That's, that's where I've always said, we, until we don't get that kind of money, I'm not, not foregoing for it. Let the, let the county take care of it, police, fire, EMS, and all the rest of it. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Matheny.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to tag back into something uh Mr. Trace said earlier when he was talking to you about the fire stations, mutual aid, things like that. And I know it's uh Mr. McDonald, you brought that up as well. So, since I've been on council, I always hear that, like, well, you know, we have to keep growing because the, we have a mutual aid agreement, we'll end up serving anyways. Well, eventually, eventually, at some point, the city limits ends, right, and the county's on the other side of it, regardless if it's at point A, B, or C, like, eventually that interface happens. So I know one of the big challenges that we have right now is because we have this big circle drawn on a map that's like, somebody drew 20 years ago and said, here's the limits of the city. Well, I know that the county is not building fire stations within that area because they're saying it's eventually going to be city, so they're not going to go build a fire station. So we are running a crazy amount of calls out into the county because they're not building, you know, we have the growth over in that area, whether it's in the city or it's in the county. And then the county isn't like investing into the fire stations in those areas, and then they're just relying on on our service to cover it. So I know that is a big problem, and that is one of the reasons I think we really need to like figure out what is the limit of the city, and then we can properly address that. That's more of just like a comment about that. And then the comparison you just made was kind of an odd one to me, where you said in 2000, we had 3.98 miles of road per person in 2020. But I mean, are, you're just looking at roads in the city, like, internal to a subdivision, that doesn't really help with, like, road capacity. You know, if you're just looking at, you know, you're building this subdivision that has 10 miles of road internal, but like one access point, you know, that doesn't really help.
No, that's.
Overall, road capacity.
That 3.98 is not, it, that's city-owned roads. That's not, you know, it's not subdivision roads. Unless you own the road, that is a metric that comes straight out of your CAFR, a city-owned road.
But we do own the roads inside of cities, inside of neighborhoods.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying. If you own, if you own subdivision roads, then that is part of.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a metric that shows that we've um kept up, you know, you could argue, I mean, obviously, I think.
Subdivision roads aren't the only roads you have in the city. So I guess my point is, even if you take that 3.98 and subtract the subdivision roads from 2000 and the subdivision roads from 2019, you're going to come up with a different number. But at the end of the day, you know, you have, and and whether it's contribution and aid to construction, doesn't matter, you have delivered at the same rate. So it, I mean, I guess I'm, I was trying to be complimentary of the city in in terms of providing capital assets to meet growth. You're not like the county. The county is.
And I, I don't think, I don't think it works like that. I don't think it works like that. That, that's the end of my comments.
Councilmember Askew, um a couple of questions. I guess one is the roads, and I know um I hear from citizens all the time about our growth and the roads. So if we decide we're going to draw a line at the canal or wherever we're going to go, that's not going to stop growth. The roads are, will be built, the county will build in a higher density than the city of St. Cloud, even worse. Because it seems like the county likes to put in a lot more density than we like to put in. I got a question about your per uh F T E population reviews. It's, you got electricity down, I guess for new, you got it down for zero. I wasn't sure if you were talking about for the entire city, or you're talking about Tohoku in that particular chart.
Yeah, that was just to say that, you know, drawing off of the, you know, revisit the Tohoku, that's just a Tohoku. Because if you do have a new home that is in your O U C service area, based on your agreement, you will get increased revenues coming into the city based on their increased consumption uh and and the increased revenue and the contribution. Um, so this, that was an example of just a Tohoku new home.
Well, Tohoku, we, I would assume, and somebody can correct me, we should be getting a percentage from the K U A's electricity bill for that. Based under our contract with K U A and the county. So if somebody can correct me of that, that would be great, because it shouldn't be zero. And that, and I agree with some of this growth, and there's a lot of questions, this actually, and I agree with um Ms. Matheny, I don't think we've added any roads since I've been on council. I mean, I would have added um influx roads to development, but on the major road for people travel, I don't see any roads. I know where Neptune's coming. But that percentage kind of threw me off as well, so. Um, and the other part is the, I guess, the unknown about water. Things change every day. There, they have some new technology. I was reading through NASA about how cleaning um water, taking saline out of water and stuff like that. So possibly in five years, 10 years, this um could be resolved, it could be a pipe coming from the co-, who knows, or digging down a little bit deeper. I guess what worries me sometimes is that we need to make a decision as council, as in what's in the best interest of the city of St. Cloud. Sometimes, you know, if you, I I kind of think of the city as a, as a business, and everything that we do is a business. And if we decide we're going to go ahead and put a big fence around St. Cloud, and I I agree, we need to come up with some kind of line someplace. What's, what will end up happening, say, let's say Tohoku, for example, we did not annex it in, Tohoku is still going to continue. Uh, there'll still be an impact on our roads. We wouldn't receive any of the impact fees for that. And and I think Mr. Trace brought it up, is like, oh, if we didn't do that, we would, we would still, we would still make money because of the water in the sewer. Yes, but we wouldn't get it um from electricity, we wouldn't get it in some of the others, because I would assume the J P A would change with that. When we stop annexing in, the J P A is going to start to squeeze itself back in. K U A will come in, or O U C will come in, but it's not going to get paid to us because it's not annexed into the city, it'll be paid to the county. Or whatever that agreement is. I I mean, I just see if O U C jumps over the canal down by Kissimmee Park Road, and when it's not annexed into the city, I don't think that that money would be coming to the city. Eventually, some agreement's going to be made down the road that uh that money's going to end up staying in the county because it has really nothing to do with the city. Our water and sewer, um, we seem to make uh pretty good money off that. But I I think the thing that we need to look at is, if you take a look at a business, let's take a look at um, um, let's take a look at Nolte Road, for example. Look at that big bill we have for that. I don't make a dime off Nolte Road. It does increase the economic growth, and and it does incite people to like, oh, we can build here, or we can, I would, I would prefer Nolte Road to be more of a business, um but that doesn't seem to have happened. But uh we, I think we just need to make some decisions where we're kind of all over the charts here. And in our water, for example, yeah, we can give our water up, we can get a percentage, just we can have somebody else manage it per our um charter. But down the road, if we don't get the water out of the ground, somebody else is going to have to get the water out of the ground. We're going to get charged for it one way or the other, or citizens are going to get charged. And then, and if it, it gets out of hand, what it's going to end up doing, we won't have a say, it's the city, and our residents will just have to um suck it up. So I think, I agree with everybody here. I think we need to take a little bit closer look at what is our water, where we want to growth, our growth to, and what are all these impacts going to do. But I'm here to say that our roads will become more and more congested if we impact it, or if we annex it in or we don't annex it in. The county will, if it's plain land, the property owner has the right to develop that property per state uh rules. We need to come up with a way where it's going to be beneficial to our citizens. How do we, how do we come up with these numbers? I got more, but that's probably for another workshop.
Mayor, maybe recognize.
Yes, so.
We haven't heard from Marjorie yet, and if she's sitting there, I just wanted to have her talk a little about the water, the debt, some of the things that Mr. Askew just talked about, if we can recognize her and let her speak for a little bit on water use permit, and where we're at with the Cypress Lake project.
Marjorie.
Yes, we can.
Okay, the Marjorie Craig, Environmental Utilities Director. Um, so as you guys know, I'm pretty new. Um, so I've been told our our average water use last year, and and again, we'll come back with more data. And I may need to also recognize Brian, who's been involved in the Cypress Lake project for a number of years as well. But our our average water use uh is about seven and a half million gallons per day, give or take. We are, uh our permitted capacity is around nine. Again, we'll bring the, all all the true numbers to you later. We are looking at probably a reduction in our permitted allocation, but everyone is. But I'll tell you that we're also uh as a city, uh interdepartmentally, and also with our uh nearby partners, looking at optimizing our water use and really um implementing a much more strategic and aggressive water conservation program. I really want to share that when it's a little more fully baked, but we're working with the University of Florida IFAS program. Uh, there's a lot of of pro, of um analytics that show different water use and what we can do to really optimize our water use. And that's not just the potable water use, but also the reuse, that's our interconnects. Uh, I've been working with Toho, wherever we can strengthen those interconnects. It's always a really good insurance policy. And stormwater as well, capture, working with NACIM, augmenting our reuse system, uh and really uh working to use the water that we have. And we will, we do have an allocation with uh through our cooperative uh for five M G D, with Cypress Lake, as y'all know. Uh, and down the road, we'll talk about that bonding. The city actually doesn't have any bonds. We have banknotes, which they refer to bonds in the CAFR, um but they're not really like regular bonds, and I'm, so I was actually very pleased to see that. We have a number of of state revolving loans that will be dropping off in the next few years as well. That's not to say that the financial cost for Cypress Lake is not a a heavy consideration. But uh it, we are entering into it in a, in a really good uh, without a lot of bond debt. So we'll bring that to you um in the future.
Do you have anything else? Thank you.
Um, the only other thing I'd say is, and and we really want to, I, in general, the more, like he said, the more customers you have, you can spread out the rates. So where's the, where's the sweet spot of the allocation we have? What can we live with? What's the ultimate build out of, and how do we optimize our water rates? So I think there's a perception that our water rates are much, much higher than Toho's. And in the annual water uh report that Raftellus does across the entire state for all water utilities and sewer utilities, our our average water use and our average bill is within uh six or seven dollars. So, you know, that's going to vary if you irrigate, if you're outside the city, all of those things. But we just, we want to bring all the facts to you and and let you know what what we think a good plan is moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Askew, do you have a question?
Thank you. I did, just to follow up, when you're talking about water, um when I was bringing up Nolte Road, we don't make any money. So I think where Brian Wheeler gave us some ideas of what Toho's doing to be prepared for their futures, that they added a percentage onto their their bill, and I don't know if that's under new development, to help cover the cost of that. We've sort of dropped the ball, and we don't, we're not really covering the new development cost for the possible, you know, 50 to 100 million dollar facility. That really doesn't scare me, because at least, I mean, it scared me, but at least that we have a way to pay for it. Where Nolte Road, I don't have a way to pay for that. So I think if we look at that, take our water, look at that as a business, and you go, okay, it's 100 million dollars, and our, and our growth is this, we just got to make sure we mesh that correctly, where we don't block growth in this certain area where we took on a debt, and then we can't pay the debt. But if we know the growth's going to be in this area, we know it's going to be in Kissimmee Park or um Center Lake, we can actually figure that out and go, okay, if we did the future growth in five years, or the future growth in 10 years, if we do it or we don't do it, we should have a number. There should be a number for that that we can all digest and go, yeah, let's do this, let's not do this. I don't know, I haven't seen that number. But I think where we drop the ball is, we have not added some kind of percentage to new development for the growth of our water. And I think that that, I I don't know, is it, Henry, is that something that the uh a council can do? I mean, that's part of the growth part, that development should be paying its own way.
Right. And 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 again, whether, you know, obviously, a rate surcharge is a little more rare, but the typical mechanism is to make sure that at the time of permitting, all these new customers are paying a water impact fee that compensates you for the capacity that's going to be required to serve them. So that, at least the capacity-related costs of that new water should be borne by those new customers. Now, that, those fees are restricted to capital costs only, the the impact fees, but that's a tool that you have. And so we shouldn't just view it as uh forcing the impact of all this onto all ratepayers, new and old, but to see how we can maximize the revenues from new development. And we need to look at, you know, uh again, it's not that common, but you could have zones uh for for utility rates as well. But I I think, you know, one of the comments Marcy, or Marjorie made was that the other thing that's going to happen over time is the water management districts are going to force us to give up some of our permitted capacity, and everybody's going to be taking more alternative water. Uh, so it's going to be a cost of serving existing customers as well as new growth in that regard.
Right, and there's, there's talks of changes, uh Mr. Trace brought up, you know. Everybody seems to be ordering from Amazon, but there's no tax dollars actually coming to the city of St. Cloud. And that could be a beast of a tax um on some of these businesses. So how do, how you figure that out, that where it goes, where does this tax go to all these things? And I think that's what, I think what we're trying to, trying to find out, so. I, um, I, I'm actually, I'm with everybody on this, let's just, we need to hash this thing out. And uh it might, the J P A might not change, but in some cases where they've already, I think, three years before, when, like I say, I arrived, it seemed like we were annexing in previously owned properties, and that doesn't seem like it benefits the city at all. We don't, that's where I said the, sort of the four-letter word for St. Cloud, if you're going to do this correctly, you need to get the dirt, you need to get the dirt. And that way, those impact fees can help in my police and fire, and if it's not enough, then that's something we need to go back to the table, relook at these impact fees and make the developers pay their way.
But Mayor, may I be recognized?
Yes, you may.
Which is exactly what we're doing, Mr. Askew and council, at your direction. And actually, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce Mr. Thomas. He's with Raftellus. That's the company that's doing that analysis of all our impact fees and our fees right now. So he's assisting with that. Um, but you know, I guess the the question I have in my mind is, is I think let's not let the, let's strike while the iron's hot, and let's do another workshop here by the end of the year. I just need to get some input on what you guys think that, what that kind of looks like, so we can get Steve starting to do his analysis. What do you think the next workshop should be on to drill this down a little bit more?
And uh water and uh putting that all together, that's, it's a, to me, it's an interesting discussion that I had, uh the last couple of meetings I met with some other mayors. And several of the mayors were struggling with the problem that they're, you know, they have older parts of their city where their roads are having to be, just like Nolte, having to be, you know, completely replaced. And what, what they were doing, struggling with the funding to do that, and what they should have done, uh trying to come up with a funding plan so that, you know, when a development is approved, that there's a, a funding source in, a transportation funding source, so that 30 years down the road, which is the average life of a, of a road, and the roads have to be replaced. You know, money, the money is there to do it, and you're not having to take it out of general coffers and enterprise funds to get it done. It had been incrementally put into a fund until it was needed. And uh, you know, to do that kind of thing, you got to think really long term. And um, uh, and then you don't end up with having to come up with fees that trying to take care of problems that are hitting you right now. up with fees that, trying to take care of problems that are hitting you right now. Uh, Councilman Matheny?
Yeah, I didn't realize that's who Mr. Thomas was. I have a comment for you. Um, and kind of circling back um to some general comments that have been made, there are restrictions to the um impact fees. And, you know, they can only be used to maintain capacity. We can't expand services with it. I wish we could. So I know um that, that's one challenge. And then also, like, when, when I got onto council, we did look at, um, we raised the impact fees, and then we also said we wanted to increase the, the rate. Because when I first got on council, whoever was giving us advice at that time, um, you know, suggested we implemented at a certain percentage because that, you know, we wouldn't get sued, you know, that people wouldn't nitpick apart our uh impact fees and like argue, you know, coefficients and whatever. They're like, you know, adopted at this percentage. And then we've since like bumped it up to a higher percentage um for that. But um, one thing I wanted us to look at, um, and I don't know if the email got forwarded to you, Mr. Thomas. Um, I know Veronica sent it to someone, and I don't, didn't see, look at who she sent it to. But um, taking a look at the breaks that we give to multifamily homes, town homes and apartments and impact fees, because we all know the same nu- I feel like, the same number of people are living in single-family homes that are living in um a town home, that are living in a um apartment. And we're giving big discounts to, to those other um, other housing types. And so I wanted us to take a real hard look at that. And um, whoever responded, I don't know if it was you, was saying that that's like, I guess, some, just that is something that can be modified based on um looking at the area. But I mean, there's four people living in a house and there's four people living in an apartment. So I don't think we should be cutting um the breaks that we are.
Mr. Thomas, you're muted.
I'm sorry. Uh, you're absolutely right that you need to look carefully at those relationships, and that's obviously part of the scope of the study. Uh, I've got another associate of mine. I'm doing the water and wastewater financial planning, and he's more involved in the impact fees. But I would say that, you know, uh, one, there's nothing that keeps you from charging that hundred percent. Uh, you know, if you have a valid impact fee, it should be supportable if you get challenged, even if you set it at a hundred percent of the calculated fee. So oftentimes, what I see is that communities under pressure politically from developers will set them less than a hundred percent. But I think if you set it at a hundred percent, I don't think that per se puts you at risk of, of legal challenge. The other thing I would say is that, you know, the fees are precisely there. They can't be used to, when you say increase the level of service, uh, or, or increase capacity. I, I just wanna be clear, what, what's at play here? Because you can't use them to do renewal and replacement of existing assets that are deficient. And that, that should be the, uh, that funding should come from existing population. Uh, you can't use them to pay operating expenses, uh, but you can use them to fund the cost of serving new capacity. What you've got to be careful about is you can't say our level of service is, uh, we want is, let's say it's officers per, per uh population. Uh, let's say right now you're, the city's only providing uh two officers per thousand, and you say, well, we want our capacity, our level of service to be two and a half. We can't charge new growth to two and a half to get to two and a half. Existing has to contribute to that increase as well. So part of it is you gotta decide what level of service you want, and then it has to be matched between existing population and future. But technically, all the expansion-related costs can be collected through impact fees. And again, I know communities that specifically with fire, uh, fire services, they have zones. And if a new area wants to develop and there's a need for a fire station, that's paid for from that new development area. So again, there's, you, you can make this tool help you mitigate some of these issues quite a bit. Uh, you just have to use it uh strategically and, and uh use it in a valid and justified way.
Yeah, I wasn't, I mean, that's my understanding of the impact fee. If I said something that triggered that, for you to clarify that, that wasn't my intent. I just mean, like, if we have a level of service F road, and then new development comes, we can't make them pay to bring this entire road up to a level of service A because that's just what we want. You know, they have to maintain about it. If we, if park use is X, we can maintain that park use. We can't, you know, we can't then say, no, we want this level of park service and then make the development pay for that. So yeah, I get that. But I think it's um, you know, I'm sure most of the council members here remember that consultant that advised us not to adopt it at a hundred percent. Um, but we have since moved away from that. But we did have the expert tell us not to do it. So um, but yeah, I think, I think all those things are great, and I'm glad we're looking at all this, and it certainly is not gonna be solved today.
Yeah, that's for sure. Do you have any other questions?
I think if council, I think there should be some kind of uh talk about a safety impact fee, police and fire can call or whatever you want. Um, with this new growth, it's just, we've, every, all of us that's lived here, we've paid for everything that we have. We're, we bought our assets or we financed our assets. Now these uh new developments coming in, they want basically what we paid for. I just wanna make sure that they're paying enough. And we, I don't know, we seem to keep bringing it up. And um, I, I know Toho's added a percentage. I don't know if it's new development or not, but they are preparing themselves for the future with this water supply. And I just don't think we're doing it. And that's something that need to be looked at ASAP because um, you know, growth is, is here, and you're gonna get the bill today. Once you make the ordinance, then it changes for the, the future. So that's something I think we should look into as well. Thanks.
Uh, i- if you don't mind, I can comment on that. And Marjorie's very familiar with this, is over in Polk County, they're forming a water cooperative to uh develop alternative water, and it's quite expensive as well. And obviously, Polk County, there's a lot of committees that are growing that need this uh alternative water. But one of the things that Marjorie did when she was a director of utilities in Polk County, is we advocated for and got a surcharge on rates to help create a savings account, if you will, ahead of the projects, so that the rates could move up more gradually rather than waiting and seeing an abrupt increase. And so that's what I think, you know, when I say surcharge, that surcharge was applied to all users, uh, including existing users, because we all are responsible for overall water demand. So it wasn't just applied that, in that case, it wasn't an impact fee applied to new growth, which you could also do, but it was a surcharge recognizing that over time, I mean, we, we've seen studies where the cost of, and this is just production, supply and production, not distribution, not administration, which are some of the savings that Stephen was referring to, when you spread those over more growth. But just the cost of production at the margin, it's like five times higher than your existing wells and your embedded low-cost water supply, which you've really sold for, for very little value because you charge, you know, you, you drop a, a pipe in the ground and, and you, you charge the cost of putting some chlorine in it and distributing it. And as Stephen pointed out earlier, it really is a commodity. So in Polk County, they're starting to do that. And I think even in Lakeland, they're looking, they're putting these surcharges in rates ahead of the alternative water supply costs to advance the rates a little bit at a time to phase in those higher impacts. Because it is inevitable. Whether you grow or not, this alternative water thing is gonna affect your costs. And Marjorie's also right that there's a lot of ways to mitigate against it, whether it's conservation, whether it's irrigation, quality water using stormwater. It, it's gonna take a pretty advanced and sophisticated strategy uh so that you don't have to rely on a lot of alternative water. But it can be done, and the more, and committees are, are looking more and more at those practices.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Mr. Sturgeon, do you have anything else for us?
I, I just, I'm not clear. I just wanted to make sure if we could come up with three to five goals for the next workshop, so we can put that together. I've got um needed infrastructure, water. I think that's um something we maybe should wait until Raftellus has done with their analysis. Um, and we're gonna look at the fees that are being charged for multifamily and apartments.
Councilman Raskew, anything else?
I would agree to that. I don't know if you're looking for um thumbs up.
No, I would put for three to five goals so we can put together in the next workshop and keep kind of moving this thing forward. So we're not, we're not having this same discussion again in a year. We'll actually have some actionable items in the next three to five months.
Eric, can, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I'm thinking.
Um, I, I, you know, I would like some, and I don't know who's the right person to do it or whatever, but I would like us to run some scenarios, like what ifs, project into the future, you know, like, what if we do this and what if we do that? Like, I think there has to be a bunch of scenarios to kind of, I mean, I know what, what we did today was basically like if all things stay the same, but all things aren't gonna stay the same. So what happens when Cypress Lakes comes on board? What happens with the, you know, like we've, I just think some scenarios would be helpful.
Like a cause and effect?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Are we all in agreement then? Any objections? I hear none.
No, no. Just make sure we get all that stuff in there, fire, safety.
Yep.
Road. More than three to five. So when you said three to five, it was hard for me to.
I don't wanna have a overwhelming workshop that we don't accomplish anything. If we get ten things, then we get marred down. If we can keep them small and do more workshops, I think that, I think this is the major issue facing us right now. And to move forward, if we can just stay focused in the next six months and have, you know, four or five workshops on this, I think we'll have, like I said, an actionable plan moving forward. Combine that with our structure, our strategic plan, I think we'll do really well.
Okay. Well, sounds good to me.
I get one more.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I, I think that um our water, before we head down that path, it would be nice to be able to get some numbers from that. And Marjorie's probably been down this road before. And if we, if we walk this line, and we can kind of, we seem to be hitting the nail on the head and on the numbers and what growth seems to be like and the number, it, um, McDonald seems like he picked that up almost perfect. So if we could take a look at some of those numbers, I don't know, maybe we take an area and go, okay, if this is Area Five, Kissimmee Park Road or South or, um, and then go, here's a scenario. If we hit this, you know, what's our impact? And if we do this, what do we have to do to make sure that our citizens aren't paying for it and then uh new growth is paying for it? How do we do that?
Okay.
I don't know if there's that, but.
You have anything else? Got it, Marjorie? No, sir.
All right. Marjorie, you wanna say something?
Uh, I was just gonna say exactly what uh Deputy Mayor Matheny said and uh Councilman Askew. We will come up with scenarios. That's, that's exactly what we did in Polk County. Uh, Mr. Thomas is exact, is, is right on target and will uh come up with a lot of different financial scenarios. Now, that's gonna take a little bit of time, so please don't make it next month. But we've got a lot of strategies. We've got the right team on it. We've got the right team.
I'm sure you guys have figured. So you guys have uh done an excellent job tonight. Thank you so much for your leadership and your wisdom and your experience.
Thank you very much for your time and, and, and all the great ideas and questions and comments. Um, it was perfect.
Well, we look forward to working with you again. Mr. Thomas, do you have anything for us?
Uh, I just hope that we can help you address these challenges. And I've got, in the future, I'm gonna make sure that Tony Hairston, which is uh one of our other VPs, uh, he's, he's, he's doing the uh, the uh impact fees for the municipal services. So I wanna make sure we include him in this in the future because there's a lot of questions about that. I, I'm familiar with that area, but I'm not assigned to your specific project there. The other thing that I'll talk to Marjorie and Brian about is I don't think it, we've, we've done some baseline financial forecasting and, and got, I would call it, maybe not the scenarios, but the base case is well laid out. But we haven't really addressed the idea of water and wastewater capacity or impact fees yet. And again, uh, you know, the, kind of the baseline would be if you don't increase those, the rates are gonna have to pick up these higher water costs. But what would the uh impact fees have to be to help offset that? And so that's something I'll talk to Marjorie and Brian about, and hopefully we can have some answers there for you too. Because I, I'm pretty sure that's not in our current scopes.
Yes, sir. Very good. Anything else, Mr. Sturgeon?
No, sir. Thank you for everybody for your attention and input tonight.
And we thank all of you. Thank you to council members. Thank all our staff uh so much. And uh if there's nothing else, we will be adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. That was great.
Excellent.